And time to start the meeting. This is the planning board meeting for December 21st, 2021, for the Town of East Fishkill. Will everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting dates are January 18th, 2022, and February 24th, 2022. We do have the full schedule of meetings. I presume those are shown on the website, so if you want to see the entire schedule for 2022, please go to the website. You will want to note that two months, February and November, the meetings actually take place on a Thursday, which is unusual, so just be aware of that. We have meeting minutes from October 12th, 2021. Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries. We'll do the roll call, starting with Craig Arco.
Here. Richard Campbell.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Ed Miyoshi.
Sarah Bloodso.
Okay. We are going to insert an item on the agenda for tonight. We've received a letter from Richard O'Rourke, representing Montage at East Fishkill. He's asked that we adjourn the public hearing that we originally scheduled for January 18th, and he'd like to adjourn it to the February meeting, which is February 24th, 2022. Could I have a motion for that?
Trump originally scheduled to talk about January 11th.
Got it. So corrected. Originally, we scheduled for January 11th, although we weren't going to have a meeting on that date. We will now change that, though, to February 24th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda, Trump National Golf Course. Michelle?
I'm going to speak to the Trump National Golf Course. They came in to add a concrete pad off of their patio for a barbecue, and in the process of getting Health Department approval, the Health Department also asked them to put some sort of overhang over the barbecue to keep contaminants out when it's not in use. So it's just really a minor site plan amendment, but I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention because there will be an actual concrete pad on the site and a little overhang over the barbecue. And that's it. That's all they've asked to do. And they couldn't be here tonight. They were unable to make the meeting.
Do we have any questions by board members or professionals?
How big of an area is it?
Oh, it's not. I can actually tell you exactly how big it is.
10 by 12?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't 100 by 50.
No, no. I think it's because it's used for the public, that the Health Department's requiring a little bit more.
Any other questions? Any comments? If not, I will -- we've prepared a resolution. I will read the resolution. Resolution of amended site plan approval. Name of site plan, Trump National Golf Course. Name of applicant, Trump National Golf Course, Dutchess County LLC. Location, 178 Stormville Road. Whereas, the applicant is seeking a minor amendment to site plan to add a concrete barbecue pad with existing patio. Whereas, to obtain approval of the Health Department, the applicant is also required to construct overhead protection for the grill to shield it from the environmental contamination when not in operation. Whereas, the applicant has provided the planning office a copy of the approved site plan showing the location of the proposed barbecue pad and overhead protection. Whereas, the action is considered a type-two action under seeker, and no further seeker review is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the addition of the concrete barbecue pad and overhang to the amended site plan titled Trump National Cart Storage Building, 178 Stormville Road, Hopewell Junction, New York, prepared by Innovative Engineering LLC, dated 9/27/21. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a motion to approve that resolution?
Perfect timing. Perfect timing.
You didn't read that. That's what I was.
Got it.
So moved.
And could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will take a roll call vote. Lori G.
Aye.
Craig Arco?
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso?
Aye.
Richard Campbell?
Abstain.
John Eichman is an aye. It passes. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Tucker Trail subdivision. And Mr. Gillespie.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
We're here tonight for a residential subdivision entitled Tucker Trails. For those of the public that may be here tonight, the property is approximately 16 acres in size. It's an R1 zoning district, and it's proposing individual wells and sewage disposal systems.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment, Mr. Gillespie?
Yes.
Because what I'd like to do actually is go ahead and open the public hearing to make this all part of the public hearing. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for Tucker Trails?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Even though the property is 16 acres or so, there's a number of environmental constraints, as you may recall them. There's a significant pond on the rear of the property. There's a wetland that resides. If you can see between the left bottom there on lots one and two, so there's really not much can be done in those particular areas and wetland buffers and things such as that. So we are planning on a total, again, of six slots. The way the driveways are going to be constructed, or the entrances are going to be constructed. One and two are going to share an entrance off of 52, and then three and four will share an entrance, and then five and six. We have a conceptual letter from the DOT relative to those access points. We've also went ahead and moved forward relative to performing soil testing on-site. We're pretty confident at this point that those are pretty well locked in. The soil is very good for what we're looking to do there. So again, I guess proximity-wise, the rail trail runs right along the rear of this property, and then the golf course sits further behind that. So we're here tonight relative to a public hearing to get some input from the public on it, and that's my synopsis.
Okay. Do we have any questions from any of the members of the board or professionals before we ask the public to join us?
No significant changes since the last time we saw this.
I'm sorry?
No significant changes since the last time we saw this.
No, it's the same map, actually. It was so tight that I didn't even resubmit because there wasn't much there.
Did you have any?
No, I don't have any comments, John. You know, we had a letter November, and I think there was some very, you know, minor items. I understand that we're not going to do the, you know, approval tonight for other reasons that, you know, Michelle can go through, but.
So just the EAF had acknowledged that there was potential for Indiana bat habitat, which we can mitigate for by making sure that no trees get taken down during the times when the bats are nesting. But there's also SHPO, Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, has noted that there might be some archaeological sensitivity or resources on the site. So we just haven't heard back from them yet. They were circulated to. We know that they received the documentation, but we just haven't heard back from them yet. So we're just going to wait another -- wait until the next meeting to see if we get some information back. I'll probably try to follow up with them and just close that loop, and hopefully we'll be able to continue next meeting.
Okay. But in the meantime, we'd be happy to hear from members of the public who are here to speak about the project. If you are here to speak, please come up, sign in your name, and.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tony Sozo, and my property is to the left of the first home on 52. And I first want to acknowledge Mr. Michael Gillespie, because after the October meeting, probably after a very long day, Mr. Gillespie was willing to talk to me outside, put this schematic up, and we chatted for a bit. So I want to thank him for that. I just have a few questions. What will the size of the homes be? Approximate cost? Those wetlands, and I think Mr. Gillespie answered the question, but I just wanted to bring it up. Will it remain, the wetlands and the pond and the area in the back, in the foreseeable future? I'm sure there'll be wells. I have a well. Will that impact in any way? Just a question. And I did ask Mr. Gillespie before, and I think he's acknowledging that there's a nice row of trees that have grown up in 35 years that I have been there, and if it could remain, it's kind of a nice privacy border, and it's -- I love trees, and I'm sure many of us do. So those are just some of my concerns, or questions, really. So if those can be answered, I'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mike, do you want to respond to those questions now, or maybe later, whatever works best for you?
I can begin now, then.
Okay.
So with regards to the wetlands and so forth, we're not touching the wetlands. We're not touching the buffer associated with those. I did have a discussion with Mr. Sozo after one of the meetings. So on the map, I detailed basically a no disturbance area within 25 feet of the property line. You can see that kind of -- there's Mr. Sozo's property, and there's lot one. So that's fine and good to put on a map that a future homeowner ends up buying and never sees. So we're going to have to try and get something a little tighter there, whether it's a formal easement restriction or deed restriction or something. We're certainly willing to provide that as a formal buffer, so, you know, it carries with the property, so that people understand you can't go in there and take all the trees down. So that was our way to try to mitigate that concern. What was the other issue?
Size of home, approximate cost of home?
We show a footprint that allows for basically a 2,300 square foot, two-story home. Pricewise, I mean, what the market will dictate. I mean, we're kind of seeing a surge right now in the housing market, especially this area, so it wouldn't surprise me if these were in, you know, six ranges, seven. It's just what's going on out there right now, so. And that's just a guess, you know. We'll see what will bear once this moves forward, so.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question. Are the individual lots going to be sold as lots, or are they going to be sold as developed with the home?
These are likely going to be sold to a home builder.
Okay. And so they will have the opportunity to select a builder, and each lot will be built possibly by a different builder?
No, no. Right now, the way it looks like it's going is that all six of these lots will be sold to a single builder.
Oh, to a single builder.
And then he will build on those parcels.
Okay.
There was one other question about the well. The well.
Yes. So we've gone far enough with the Health Department where, you know, unless we get to that next step preliminary, they will not release the well permits to be drilled on the property. And I know we have to wait a month. That's fine. There may be, just beyond that question, is there may be some activity to try and get well rigs in there. We've got to get temporary permits from DOT to literally get the access ways into there. So if you see anything going on out there, that's what we're doing, just trying to get well rigs in there. We have to drop these wells. We have to test them for quality and quantity. You know, we have a pretty good distance away, I would say probably 120 feet, from Mr. Sozo's property. If -- I'm not sure of the composition of your well, whether it's a point well, is it a driven well, or a deep well, or?
Deep well.
I mean, certainly not much of a concern. We can monitor that well when we're doing the drawdown tests on the proposed well, just to alleviate that concern.
If I remember, I think it was 125 foot, I don't know, something like that.
I think when we had spoken before, I think you had mentioned, too, when the golf course came into play.
Right.
They came and actually monitored your well.
Yeah, well, they asked, and I haven't had any issues with the golf course having been here all these years.
And I'm assuming that's the irrigation wells.
So it's probably.
Okay.
So we can address that like that.
Okay. Yes, we have some other questions?
If it's sold as a development for six lots, is the size of the house limited to what we're seeing? Could someone say, "Well, I want to build much larger and much -- take up more territory
I'm on the opposite side, so if you could zoom into that, the other piece of property
and make it 4,000 square feet"? You know, I'm not a builder, so I don't know.
next to him, in the middle of this whole U-shaped piece of property.
Yeah, they could. We tried to provide a footprint here. One of the concerns that the town engineer had was trying to provide for enough area in order to maneuver a vehicle at the garage location.
And I see a dotted line that goes all the way around. Is that also a buffer zone?
One of the reasons is because these houses are shown a little larger than typically would be shown on a plan. So we're trying to look at a worst-case scenario in terms of the size of the homes.
The dotted line that goes around both of those properties, is that also a 25-foot buffer
We're limited to 125 foot of width, which is effectively where we are on these plans.
zone?
Mike, do you want to step up to the microphone, please?
So they have to meet that 25-foot side yard requirement, and 50-foot, and obviously 50-foot There is a -- what you may be referring to is the building setback line, so no building in the rear. So I would say from a footprint standpoint, I don't particularly see these getting any can occur within that 25-foot setback. larger than shown.
There are some restrictions to begin with.
And then on the rear flag lot, that building setback is actually 50 feet. Yeah, there's going to be minimum square footage.
And, Mike, what was the footprint?
So there's also a disturbance area, limits of disturbance area that we show on there,
Sorry.
Well, total home, total home, I think it runs around 2,300, 2,600 square feet right but I think you're talking about the building setback line.
Oh, that's a setback line?
along there.
The footprint's about half that?
Well, it says on this one, on Tony's side, it says, "Don't disturb at 25 feet."
And that's two stories. That's two stories, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the public who have questions or comments?
Right.
That's a width?
Right.
Is it also on the opposite of my side?
No.
Well, can there be?
I don't see why there couldn't be.
Because I had planted some evergreens in intention of that being built at one point, and I don't know if they're going to be disturbed, but I would like a buffer. I'm not used to looking at huge houses, or, you know what I mean? I just, I appreciate what I have. If there could be some kind of buffer zone on my side as well.
You're looking at both sides and the rear, or?
Well, the rear not as much as the -- especially this side, because that's where my house is, more to that side, more to Tony's side.
I don't see any reason why we can't apply something like that.
Just to preserve, you know, privacy.
Sure.
Other members of the public who are here to speak about the project? If not, are there any other final questions or comments from members of the board or professionals?
Just one thing, Mike, and there was another comment letter from the DOT, from David Croucher. So I think you got to just spend a little time to rectify that with your preliminary approval from Cassandra Bibo.
Yeah, so I had a discussion when I saw that come across. The gentleman, what was his name again?
David Croucher.
Yeah, he is the gentleman up in -- he's in Poughkeepsie, but he deals with the seeker issues when they come across for lead agency and so forth. What he essentially said in there was, "We have no problem with the board being lead agent. Oh, by the way, this is everything you got to do. Site dis- [inaudible]." So I called him, and I asked him if he was aware of Cassandra's letter. Of course, he wasn't, but, you know, that's the way it is. So I sent him a copy of that, so he had it, and I will make sure that everybody's on the same wavelength with regards to that, so.
And I just make sure that, I mean, his concerns, if they are, again, you're right. I mean, he's just stating the, you know, the guidelines and.
Right.
Regulations that are out there, but just make sure that the things that he is stating, you know, nothing is going to change the plan significantly from what, you know, Cassandra thinks it's going to be.
Yeah. I mean, I think because of where he's at, he actually didn't have as much familiarity as Cassandra did.
Right.
Based upon the roundabout, maybe, and so, but we'll get that squared away, so everybody's on the same page.
Okay. Okay. So that's something you can resolve for next meeting. In the meantime, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Closed. So we'll look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I appreciate it, and have a great Christmas.
Thank you, you too.
You too.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Foster Road Professionals.
Good evening, Alfred Capelli Architect.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I don't have anything to go up on the screen. I did bring the site plan on the easel here.
Okay.
I think we've been here several times to discuss the parking expansion.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I'll give it.
On the corner of Foster Road and Route 82, for the benefit of the medical buildings that we're looking to utilize some additional square footage in the attic of one of the buildings. So pretty much that's where we are. I, based on Brendan's several comments in dealing with the DOT, we have added a paved entrance drive, along with signage reflecting temporary construction entrance. If you recall, we have a residential property, and the parking is going to the rear of the residential property, and we wanted to use one of the residential driveways as a construction entrance, so to speak, so as not to bring all of the men and equipment through the Foster Road entrance. So it works for us, but now we have to do a little bit more work there, but it is what it is. We also put an additional, several signs further beyond as far as signage, permanent signage, about keeping that accessway unobstructed, because that driveway will also be used as an emergency access, if you will, for firefighting purposes, so fire apparatus can come in off of Foster Road, but they can come in off of Route 82 as well and fight a fire if anything happened. And that's pretty much -- so that's the only change that was really, that took place between the last time I was here, two meetings ago.
Okay.
And today, I believe. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or?
And have you worked through the approval issues with regards to the septic system yet, or?
Septic system's still with the Health Department.
Okay.
So we're going back and forth.
Okay.
So that's submitted, came back, we resubmitted to them. We have not submitted to the DOT yet. We just got our perm 33 to file for that residential improvement, if you will, on that temporary driveway, so that has not been filed formally yet, so.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions or comments by board members or professionals? If none, we do have a resolution that I will read. Resolution of amended site plan approval, Foster Road Professional. Name of applicant, Ray B. Sinha. Location, 4549 Foster Road. Whereas, the above-referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board for an amended site plan approval to replace second-floor storage space with administrative offices, to add a stair tower, elevator shaft for secondary egress to the second floor, and to construct 20 new parking spaces. Whereas, as part of the amended site plan approval, the applicant will relocate three existing handicap parking spaces currently located in front of the building with signage to the north side of Building 2. Whereas, the action is considered a type-two action under seeker, and no further seeker review is required. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board approves the site plan titled Foster Road Professional, prepared by Alfred A. Capelli, AIA, architect, dated July 13th, 2021, and last revised on September 20th, 2021, with the following conditions. Number one, the site should be merged into one lot. Number two, final review and approval of emergency access and signage by the town's traffic consultant. Number three, engineering consultant review of proposed drainage. Number four, satisfactory resolution of all comments in the Hudson Valley Engineering letter dated October 8th, 2021, and the CPL letter dated October 7th, 2021.
I have an additional condition. Also, we're going to add Health Department approval as condition five.
So number five, Health Department approval.
Just a quick question. Are both lots the same zone, or are we creating a split zone?
They are -- there's, I believe, the Mocelli property is R1, right? The back of it's R1, and the front of it's B1.
That's correct.
Yeah. So the area where the parking lot already is, is?
Is B1.
Is B1. And what we're doing is we're just, we actually, technically, they were supposed to have merged the lots.
Last time.
Last time.
But it's split between the cracks.
But it never happened.
Yes, that's correct.
So it's, I mean, it's already a split zone. It's just going to now make it all in one parcel, essentially, and it should all be on one parcel.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or conditions before we continue? Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a motion approving this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Lori G.
Aye.
Craig Arco?
Aye.
Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
Sarah Bloodso?
Aye.
Richard Campbell?
Aye.
John Eichman?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Happy holiday.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry about it. Thanks.
Yep. The next item on the agenda is Stormville Square. We have a modification to the application that Brian will explain to us.
Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering. Here tonight to present a site modification from where we were at the closing of our last public hearing. Our last iteration showed a 21,000-square-foot building toward the rear of the property. In looking at some of the financial aspects of the site improvements, cost of the building, infrastructure improvements, and also the retaining wall in the back portion of the property, and based upon the need for this type of use in the area, the applicant ran a couple of numbers and decided to try to make the building slightly larger, so now we're showing just a hair under 36,000 square feet for the rear portion of the building. In doing that, we shifted the building forward slightly, and it allowed us to reduce the size of the height of the retaining wall in the back. And we went from a pre-cast, concrete reinforced retaining wall, and we're now leaning toward like more of a ready rock style, gravity retaining wall, which is a little cheaper to install, still accomplishes the same goal of retaining soil. So we wanted to present this to the board tonight to get input on the size increase, and then obviously take it to the next step in the approval process, but that's the change that we've had since the last public hearing.
Okay. Actually, we don't have any public comment this evening. We will have a public hearing at some point in the future, but so, Brian, circulation and for emergency vehicles and things like that?
You've been in the truck templates, you've been in the fire truck templates.
Our last iteration showed a 21,000 square foot building toward the rear of the property. In in looking at some of the financial aspects of the site improvements, cost of the building, infrastructure improvements, and also the retaining wall in the back portion of the property, and based upon the need for this type of use in the area, the applicant ran a couple of numbers and decided to try to make the building slightly larger, so now we're showing just a hair under 36,000 square feet for the rear portion of the of the building. In doing that, we shifted the building forward slightly, and it allowed us to reduce the the size of the, the height of the retaining wall in the back. And we went from a precast concrete reinforced retaining wall, and we're now leaning toward like a more of a ready rock style gravity retaining wall, which is a little cheaper to install, still accomplishes the same goal of retaining soil, so. We wanted to present this to the board tonight to get input on the size increase, and then obviously take it to the next step in in the approval process, but that's the change that we've had since the last public hearing.
Okay. Actually, we we don't have any public comment this evening. We will have a public hearing at some point in the future, but, so, Brian, circulation and for emergency vehicles and things like that?
You've been in the truck templates, you've been in the fire truck templates around the building. We're still holding the same widths that we showed previously in our application, so we maintain the fire access, maintain truck access around the building. In the rear of the building, 24-foot lanes, standard issue for for vehicle movements around the building. The only thing is the building's slightly bigger and pushed forward.
Is the building growing any taller?
Still one story.
Still one story?
Still one story, same architectural style, it's just just a little bit bigger. And just from running numbers and viability of the project, it's a little bit bigger to support the infrastructure cost. The retaining wall in the back was a little bit pricey, so we tried to change it as best we could and come into our lower cost wall.
So going up a story was more expensive than expanding the one story?
Yes, ma'am.
And the retaining wall, is that still relatively same size, same height?
It's it's lower in height, so I think our max height is 14 feet, I believe, and it's 14 feet and it's in a smaller section. I think before we were more toward the 16 to 17-foot range over a longer portion, so by moving the building forward, we were able to reduce that wall and and the cost associated with that wall. The reinforced retaining walls are, they're pretty expensive at that wall height with your stems front and back and and trying to construct them, so with the ready rock style, their modular blocks, they interlock, it's just a more, it's a more productive wall, let's say.
Are we still looking at no restrooms in that building?
No restrooms in the building. There'll be no water facilities or waste in in that building. The office, as we described at the last meeting, will be in the existing building up front. There is, there'll be a tenant space that'll convert to an office, so rental, if there's if there's rentals to be had, they would go there first, and then they would go in the back. Since this is, this building is going to be locked, the entries would have key codes, so in this iteration, looking at some of the things where we could save costs, we remove the gate in the front, since it'll all be keypaded, there's no reason to to have that gate in the front, so we remove that. Again, it's just a an iteration, it's the same concept, same principle, just a little bit bigger. Landscaping and lighting still remain. Photometrics will be there.
Is there any of operation the same?
It's 24/7, right?
It's, you can pretty much come in, it's keypaded, so.
So you're going to have lights on 24 hours?
There'll be lights on, especially for security purposes, but yeah, there'll be standard issue low cutoff, probably motion dawn to dusk type of lighting, but obviously wouldn't exceed it across the property lines, and we would have our screening component still remains on the residential end.
And a fence around it, how high is the fence?
For the for fall protection, we're going to have it on the upper retaining wall. It'll be cored into the retaining wall, so that'll be standard height. I think we usually do like a 48 or or 48, no, we have 60-inch, I believe, on the retaining wall for the top, but then as you as you come down around the sides, since we're all keypad entered in, we remove that fencing component, and we'll have more of like a landscaping buffer in that area.
Is it, and I'm I'm sorry, I just don't recall the original footprint, is it a single front access and interior access to units?
So there's there's a central corridor that will come in, main entrance remains in the same spots in the center of the building, and then there's hallways that are inside the building, and there's two exit doors. There is an exit door here and an exit door here, just for emergency vehicle pedestrian access through the building, so, but the main entrance is in the front, two rear buildings.
Those are just exit?
Yes.
So all your parking's in the front?
All the parking's in the front, and since we have some parking, we have this door in the back, there's a couple of spots here that we put, just because it worked with the grade, to have a couple of spots in the back, so if somebody was unloading, they could enter this back area or walk over to this door. So we provided a couple of spots there for unloading.
So will also be ingress, not just exit?
The main entrance is, this is your main entrance, if somebody comes in, they can also use the rear door and come in there too, but the object is to funnel everybody through the front.
Is there any material that has to be taken off-site in connection with?
We did soil tests in the late summer, early fall, beautiful material, sand and gravel, and actually, as the further you go down, the sandier it gets, so the object was is to try to keep, to try to cut this site down lower and push the material forward and spread it out, so the object is to have no material export on-site. The only material we'd be bringing in is, you know, your crushed stone for around your pipes and your water surfaces and things like that.
And what's your fire suppression for the building?
They're going to do dry sprinklers in the in the building, and we'll have hookups outside, and then in the event that water and sewer comes through, you know, it's a different conversation, but dry system now.
So there could potentially be trucks in that back corner where those parking spaces are, basically idling while they load and unload, pretty close to that house that's over there?
It's it's, again, it's the same concept that we had before, but, yeah, there's there are residential developments here, there are parking spaces there, so potentially there could be an unloading. It's not a commercial application where you're going to have like diesel trucks sitting there idling for 30, 35 minutes. There are more storage locker units that are, you know, I think we had the 5x5s to 5x10s and 15x20, so they're they're not larger, it's not like a larger commercial operation.
Were you, did you have to have parking back there?
If you look at the, if you look at the parking requirement, you need 36 spaces for this this size building, so we provided 36 spaces. If the board would entertain a waiver, we could reduce those spaces in that area if possible. If we're going to hold to that parking count, the only thing we would do, if we had to remove those spaces, we could remove them up front.
You said there's four spaces back there?
Uh. Eight spaces?
Do you have any information about what's typically required for parking for this type of use, because certainly we could, if you could provide us with what is typical, we could look at, we could have our traffic consultant look at that and let us know if
Definitely, we'll provide you information.
We'd be able to entertain a waiver.
We'll reach out to the manufacturer that we're we're working with and see what the general rule of thumb is, but I think it's parking heavy for for what's there, but we'll we'll provide supplemental information.
Okay, great.
Ideally, you wouldn't have parking to the back of the building, you'd keep everybody coming in through the front.
Makes sense.
Other questions and comments, anything from our professionals? Yeah.
I'll go first. I think there's still at least one traffic circulation issue that we have to get some clarity on. I know when the field meeting occurred with the DOT, I don't think there was a definitive conclusion as to how the the existing access into the plaza was going to be permanently configured. I know on this plan you're showing it as a one-way out, but I know at that meeting there was discussion about it being restricted to a right turn only out. So with that said, I just noticed on the site plan too, that it looked like the the circulation around the existing building was one-way also. So if that's a one-way out with a right only, if that's what the DOT is going to permit it that way, I think it's going to, you know, run into some issues of some people wanting to come out of the plaza and take a left and not be able to go circle back around to the main driveway. So I don't know whether there's potential to have two-way around the building, or you should, or then, you know, I think you you might want to go back to DOT or do a little more coordination to DOT to see if they'd be willing to approve that as a an out only but allowing lefts and rights.
Yeah, we'll reach out to them, we submitted our application to DOT, so.
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's it's in their hands, I don't know if they had a chance to review it, but we'll definitely coordinate.
So what was submitted was a looking to permit both rights and left turns?
It was this this plan that was that was submitted, that had left in.
So I think that's important, you know, just from the, because if the DOT doesn't approve that, I I think we want to look to, we would want to look to improve the internal circulation. Then the only other thing that didn't seem to be fully addressed on the plan was that the curb lines change on that existing driveway, and it looked like there was more than one line shown on the southern end. There is currently existing closed drainage with curb inlets that are just, they don't even show, they're not, on the plan, it doesn't show them being modified, so I don't know if that's part of the highway work permit, or if you're proposing to make, I mean, I would presume there has to be some modification to that drainage that's there.
Right, we did get some additional survey information since the last meeting, so we'll incorporate that into our revision.
Okay. I think the rest of the comments that we had were relatively minor, just about some of the detailing. I think there's some older references to the DOT standard sheets that need to be updated, and then just some further detailing of, you know, pavement markings and signs. There was a table put in of signs, but just the locations of those signs and any other pavement markings. And then the last thing, I think we we did make some suggestions on the the design, I think at the main entrance, in order to accommodate truck maneuvers out of that entrance, you know, there were some off-tracking, and I think what's being proposed to handle that is they're going to put some mountable curbing in and allow for, you know, some off-tracking over the curb for larger trucks that are coming in and out, so there's less of an impact on the state highway, and they can get in and out. I just, there, I don't know, I would ask again if you looked at some, if you would look at some of our suggestions on on that design, whether it's mountable curbing or traversable curbing, which is a little bit different, and just, you know, in terms of, I don't think the plan called out for it to be a different color, but I think, you know, that's good practice. I think the one that went, like, I think I mentioned it last time at the last meeting, the one that went in at the the gas station at 82 and at the Conic, I think if you could accommodate a design like that, it would be good.
Absolutely, absolutely. Again, today was just to kind of update the board on this concept, and if it's palatable, then move forward with additional details.
Okay.
Both Pete and Brendan.
All right.
All set? Couple things, so you're going to have to update the stormwater plan, right, because of the larger building, but in your DOT submission, did you have to include anything on drainage for them, or that's going to be provided later?
We're, yeah, we're providing drainage to them, and we're going to update our drainage analysis that we preliminary prepared to modify this show this building. It'll incorporate comments that we typically do for the site drainage design, so you can have that for review.
Okay. I know you mentioned about the cut and fill, so, you know, we'd just like to see something on that because, just, you know, to make sure, because it does seem like there's, it does seem like there's a bunch, that there's going to be some excess, but by the time you take into account, you know, the wall and the drainage, drainage behind the wall and your underground infiltration-like systems, so if you could just run those like numbers and then include those in the last, in the next submission, you know, as we put in here, you know, if there is a, if there is a decent amount of excess, we just want to make sure that there's a note on the plan that just says if this material is going to be deposited somewhere's in the town of East Fishkill that the deposit site, we'll have to like come in and get a, you know, a grading permit in accordance with our code, so we've run into that in other towns where, you know, it, you know, goes somewheres and then, you know, that that particular site needs some, you know, earthwork and erosion control.
Absolutely.
So I guess, you know, there's there's some small things on elevations, you know, structures and that kind of stuff, and I'm sure that all that'll come, so. I guess the last thing was on the retaining wall, so I know you said that, you know, you shortened it on one end of the site, I don't remember where like north is now, but on the site, on the on the side that's tightest to, you know, the property line, so was the fence before on top of the, on top of the slope, or was it always on the wall?
It was always on the wall, I believe.
It was always on the wall?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so now in the in the section of the site where it is tight tighter to the property line, there's a fairly steep slope, and, you know, we're concerned with the residential neighborhood, you know, behind, you know, and any, you know, anybody, you know, kids or like animals coming over that, you know, like property line, and then they're down, they're down a fairly steep slope before they hit the wall, and there's like a fence on the wall, so I think that's got to be looked at like a little more, i.e., you know, maybe there should be a secondary split rail fence at the top, you know, you know, I don't know that you want to make the wall higher just, you know, for that, but I think we need to do something just to warn warn people, hey, you know, this is it, don't go any further.
Yeah, I, since we have the residential component behind us and on the side of us, I I don't think the applicant would have a problem.
Now, is there any screening, Michelle, that's required because it's adjacent to like residential?
Well, that's one of my comments right, that I'm going to ask, there's, I see that there's got landscaping along, I don't even know what side of the, but along where it would be against, I guess, 52 there?
Yeah.
So it doesn't go all the way to the end, though, and I don't know if that's because of the parking lot and maybe the grading, so, but now if we if we can look at removing some of those spaces, maybe we have a little bit more room to add some additional landscaping to protect some of those residential properties?
Absolutely.
And then also, is there going to be a chain link fence or some sort of fence? What what's the fencing around this? Is there security fencing, or have you?
We got rid of the security fencing just because it's going to be keypad entry, so the fencing along the sides and the front we got rid of, so we removed that component, but we can, on top of the rail, it was more of a heavier duty rail that's anchored into the retaining wall, but we can also add a split rail fence above that for for residential.
I mean, we got to look at something, I I don't know that the split rail fence is the answer, but, you know, it could be, but it's just that we just, we want to prevent anybody from being up at the top and then, you know, whatever, you know, kids are out like playing, anything can happen, so. So the other thing is, I don't think with the ready rock, I mean, I've done, I've done like a bunch of them, I don't know if I've done one this like tall, but I don't think that they rely on any kind of a grid system when they get to a certain height. I think it's all gravity, but.
Yeah, usually when you travel, usually when you get over 14 to 16 feet, you kind of get into the the geotech area.
But can you work with, can you work with the ready rock, like people, I'd like to see just, even if even if it's not like final, something of a, you know, preliminary-like design that would show that, hey, we're not going to have to put any kind of a grid, you know, we can go and build this all within our own like property without having, you know, you know, encroach or change your site plan.
Yeah, we'll we'll give you calcs on it.
I mean, you know, like, they'll do that for you, you know, like, ready rock will do that for you.
We did a preliminary design on this on this, which was the maximum wall height was, I believe, maybe 14 or slightly less in one section, and the majority was in the 10 to 8-foot range, but I'll give you calcs on both.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and look, we did, we did a pretty tall one in the city of Poughkeepsie that we were tight to the property line, I don't think there was, I don't think there was any like grid for that one, so, but anyways, we should, we should go look at it, and then what about the, you know, encroachment, remember that that piece of building or something, or something like encroached there? How did we leave that the last time?
The the applicant reached out to the to the homeowner and agreed to take down that encroachment, she she wants it down, so as part of this application, we're going to help her with that, so when machines are on site to to remove that.
Well, I think, you know, Michelle, if that's going to happen, do we want it done before the chairman signs, you know, the map, or can it be like a condition, a CO? I don't know, I mean, we can.
We can make it a condition of a resolution.
Condition of.
Condition, condition of site plan.
Condition of, you know, the chairman signing.
Exactly, yes. That's fine.
Okay. Right, okay, it'd be, it'd be better just to get, just to take care of it. Okay.
So I have just a couple of questions about the lighting, the wall packs. I didn't, I didn't see detail, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but but the, I just want to make sure that the wall packs, how tall, is the building height changing at all from the original one? Okay, it's going to be the same, so can you remind me of how tall it's going to be again?
I think our eve height was 11 feet, something, 11-foot eve height reminds me of where we were at the last one, I'll provide you.
Okay, great, and I just want to make sure that they're angled down and not this way?
Yes.
Because that can cause a lot of problems for neighboring properties and. Because that can cause a lot of problems for neighboring properties and since there is some residential, it can be...
Yeah, we'll do the full cutoff, downcast.
Perfect, and then...
Michelle, just one thing to add to that. I know this is just something that we've encountered in our office recently is that they now have the lights where they can, they can be on and dim for security purposes and then motion detected to be, then come on brighter. I mean, that might be a worthwhile feature for something like this in the residential area.
Okay, that'd be great. And then I, so you'll look at, you'll look at the landscaping again and once you look at the parking and all that, which would be great, because I think you might have the opportunity to add some landscaping behind, which would be...
Okay, that's a quick question. Is there any, any landscaping that's like required up here as like a buffer by code?
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess there's...
I don't know, I'm just asking.
There's no, nothing requiring by code, but I think it might be worthwhile to landscape the top of, I don't know what the top of the wall.
Well, it's going to be tough, I mean, that's, because you've got the wall to get behind there, you know, yada, 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 but...
You're going to want something you don't really want to maintain because it's...
And I think, I think, I think the houses on that side are pretty far away.
Yes.
But, I mean, we could look at it again, but it'd be very hard, it'd be very hard to plant something up on the, behind there.
There's some, most of this vegetation, existing vegetation will be removed, though, right?
It's, it's mainly removed down. Yeah, up along that property line is, it's mainly overgrowth and prickers and that kind of vegetation up there.
Was, was the planning board going to consider a site visit for this one?
Beg your pardon?
Site visit or is planning going to think, or no, just go, go on your own?
What's the feeling of the board? Would you like to do a site visit?
I know, I know the property.
Okay. I think I'm, I'm relatively familiar with it.
As am I.
Okay. Are there... Other, other questions or comments?
Just based upon where we were at the last meeting with our public hearing, just what it would take to move forward on this. Obviously, tonight was, we were here just to discuss the concept and position and the parking of the building. The SWIP is already in progress, we'll update the drainage. We have a DOT application and we'll coordinate with DOT. Does this application go to a new public hearing? And if so, if we're going to go down that path, could we schedule it for the January meeting, taking these modifications into account?
I do think we'd have to reopen the public hearing just given that it's, you know, a fairly significant change.
Do we have to recirculate as well?
Right, I forgot.
We have to update the circulation, probably should send a letter to all the involved agencies just acknowledging with, with the new set of plan.
Do we have enough time for notice and everything?
Everybody's going to have to get it again.
County planning should get it too as the two thirty-nine AM. We did already, we did already get a response from them.
Yeah, we did, we got a bunch of stuff already. So how, the things that we've talked about tonight, how quickly do you think you can make those, those changes to the plan?
I could have it to the planning department by Friday. Actually, no, you guys aren't working on Friday, Christmas Eve?
No.
Because that means Thursday, that means Thursday afternoon.
But you're going to have, you know, the SWIP updated by then, too?
I won't have the SWIP updated, but I'll have all the plan comments updated by that time.
Have you done, have you done, you know, your soil, I know you did like deep test, but did you do the infiltration?
Yes, yeah, and that, that was incorporated into our initial SWIP.
The initial, all right, I'll check in with Christian.
So from a circulation standpoint, I can get the details on there. The only thing that takes a little bit of time is the drainage, which we've already started and we did a preliminary design. So taking that and just modifying the area slightly, there's not much to do there, but that won't be done by Thursday. But for circulation purposes, I could have what we talked about tonight on the plan.
So is there any reason to not consider a public hearing for the next meeting in January?
Are you going to be able to make the notification time? With the holiday?
Michelle, do you have to have another thirty days for the recirculation?
I don't know if we have to give, because we've already declared our intent to be lead agency and circulated initially, so now it's a revision to a plan. It's not a substantial change, I don't think they're going to...
They need a full thirty days for that.
I don't think they're going to.
Good.
As long as we notify them that it's been modified.
Makes sense.
But the meeting's January eighteenth, so that's pretty close. So I, I mean, I would, and then the next one is February twenty-fourth. Does it matter?
I'm going to get fired if I don't do the eighteenth.
Okay.
So, so you know you'll have to get all the stuff into, and there's, you'll have to be working around some vacation schedules, so just make sure you contact Jackie. Are you here tomorrow, Jackie? Yeah, okay, so contact Jackie tomorrow, we'll figure that out.
We'll make it happen.
So I just have one more question for you. So you made the footprint of the building bigger. We're talking about potentially reducing the parking if it fits, but there's still a section of this property that you intend to develop further at some point. What do you plan to do with that piece of property or that section of the parcel?
No plan intention right now. I think a lot of this depends upon the ability of water and sewer in the area.
Yeah, right.
There's, and that's the same case with all the parcels that are in this general area. As, as water and sewer comes online, we would entertain a revisit to the board on any kind of development potential, but for right now, it's, it's tough with, with separation distances, so we encourage, we hope that water and sewer comes through this corridor.
Got it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Stormville Square for the next meeting, which is January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will have a public hearing and so members of the public will be permitted to speak and offer comments and questions at that time.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, the next item on the agenda is I park buildings A, B, and C.
Hello all, Troy Wojcowski with Stantec, engineer for the applicant. Unfortunately, I couldn't connect to your screen, so I'm a little bit naked up here without a plan. So we have my little plan there for tonight.
Oh, do you need the password?
I think it's like an IP, IT block from my company on my laptop that's blocking me.
Got it.
Apologize for that.
No problem.
But I think we can, we can work through this. And the applicants, they apologize, they couldn't, they were intending on being here tonight, but they actually have a conflict, a public hearing on another project, so they couldn't be here tonight. Since we last met, we submitted for all three sites, complete engineering plans and complete SWIPs. Again, site A is the larger warehouse project, one hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Project B is the smaller warehouse project, eighty thousand square feet. And site plan C is the backlot studio project. I've received comment letters from Pete's office and Brendan's office. And for the most part, we're comfortable with them. It's a lot of engineering cleanup comments in both cases. And I know that the applicant's traffic consultant is working on a memo to address Brendan's comments that were pretty straightforward. I think there was some concern on the, the gates that were used in the traffic analysis, gate five, which is the southernmost, and gate three. So that, that'll be clarified with our next submission. I will report, based on a conversation with the applicant today, that it's actually a good thing that we separated these applications into three separate ones. The application for site plan C, backlot studio actually has become very hot. So we kind of asked the board if we could focus on, on that site plan out of the three. And I'm hopeful that we can possibly schedule a public hearing for that in January, if possible. I think for, for site plan C, the comments were really pretty straightforward. I think one thing we need to do with C, because it's a very unique use, is to meet with the appropriate fire officials. There's some questions and comments about access to the, the fake building facades and how much fire protection is needed for those facades. Because as you recall, there's one, there's one twenty thousand square foot studio building and then you have the three fake streetscapes with the fake building facades. So there's been some question, I think even from Brendan's office, you know, what type of access do we need to those fake building facade areas? So I think it's, it's one of those things that we should meet with the fire department, you know, on site and review the site plan with them. But as far as, you know, the other comments go, you know, we submitted full photometric plans, lighting plans. It was the full engineering. So I don't know if Pete and Brendan want to go through their comments and any comments from the board.
Okay. Could you possibly just give us a quick review on where you are with regards to the visitor's center? I think there, I'm still not sure if we've resolved the questions with the architectural review committee? And there are some other issues that, regarding grading, stuff like that, that need to be resolved?
That might be the other application, was that the Frito-Lay?
I'm sorry, no, I, I'm talking about the visitor's center.
Visitor center, we don't have a visitor's center.
I'm not sure he was the engineer on the visitor's center.
Art, the art center?
The art center, the visitor's center.
Oh, yes, we're not...
And you weren't involved, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
They're not here to...
I'll save that question.
That was a test, that was a test.
I was ready to make something up, but I couldn't.
I'll save that.
Troy had a question regarding the, the studio backlot project. So it's a twenty thousand square foot actual facility, a building, four walls and a roof. Now this backlot stuff, do you have any idea the general construction of it? Will it be just regular framing, like wood framing with, you know, exterior that's, you know, like a home exterior on it or is it going to be masonry construction?
I have to find out more information on the actual materials because the, some of the visuals that I presented to the board and that we submitted, you know, they're really self-standing with kind of just still, so I don't know if that lends itself to real heavy materials or if it's really lightweight, kind of, you know, stucco-type of materials that are shaped and formed to look like wood and, and other materials, but I can certainly find out more information on that.
That would have some bearing on the fire, too.
Correct, exactly. Right. Right, I agree, for, especially for our meeting with the fire department, we'll have to have some of those, some of those answers for sure.
Was there already a meeting, though, with the fire advisory board? I mean, that's, that's what I took away from the submission and there was comments generated and answers to comments.
We have not met with them, but we've submitted to them. They've been circulated and they provided two rounds of comments so far.
Okay.
Yeah, the first, first round was, I think, most of the concern was access in, in the backlot studio parcel. They didn't seem to have any additional comments on that the second time around, per se. But they did have the question of, you know, coordinating during a movie scene with the fire department, particularly if there's going to be some type of, you know, combustion or, or something like that. And the applicant has indicated that for those types of situations, they coordinate with the fire department to be on hand and, and all that. So that's a special kind of condition during the movie shoots.
I know one of the things you were working on was DEC approval of this use. Is that, is that resolved or still in process?
I'm not aware of...
Am I correct?
Well, I think, maybe that was the, maybe that was the question. No, no, there was...
No.
There's so many things.
Trust, trust me, I'm not, so, so I believe, I believe there's a question as to whether this is a manufacturing use and whether it, whether it fits a restriction by the DEC?
Oh, as far as I am aware from the applicant, residential uses are not permitted based on the restrictions, but this type of warehouse distribution is, is allowed, is permitted.
Okay.
Because I think this has a special designation, if I'm not, I'm not really sure, but I thought that the, the movie stuff had a separate designation by the state.
I think they were meeting with the DEC to determine whether or not they would agree. They were arguing, arguing is probably, but they were trying to present that the use was, would fit within the light industrial uses that were permitted on the site. And I think they were making the case for that. I don't know what the ultimate outcome of that meeting was.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to find out information on that. I'm not aware of what the outcome of that was.
Well, there was also, Troy, there was also, I think, it was on Christian's comment for building, building A about the potential for a wetland in the, in the one, one corner of the site.
Yeah, building A is on the west side of the, of the property. So you have West Drive, on the west side of West Drive is a DEC wetland, which would have a hundred-foot adjacent area.
Right.
Which just based on the DEC's environmental mapper, looks like the hundred-foot adjacent area might clip the bottom of our parking, you know, our, our kind of project area.
Well, that's based, that's based on the mapper, though, that's not, right?
Correct, yeah, the wetlands haven't been flagged at this point.
All right, well, I assume, I assume you're planning on doing that?
Yes, yep.
I should probably, probably do that, like, soon with, you know, winter, winter just, just about here.
Well, if we want to go through, you know, individual sites, I mean, I think if we're talking about site C and the backlots, I mean, I read the, the comment from the fire advisory board, which basically indicated that they were looking for circulation around the sets and the studio. You know, the, the circulation that was shown was just the, the fire apparatus being able to come down to the center of the development. So I, I do think that needs to get resolved. And again, it might be just an interpretation or some additional information provided to the board so that they understand that these things, you know, if there is a fire, how they're going to be able to, you know, to, to deal with that. And then the only other, the only other circulation issue that we had, well, now that you have it up on the screen, there are some, you know, there's, there's obviously just regular car parking, but then there's also trailer, whether they be like, you know, I don't know what kind of, is that intended to be tractor trailers?
Those diagonal or for buses and I think RV-type vehicles or the trailer?
So this is buses and RVs here?
Correct.
And then these are like movie trailers?
Correct, yeah, those, in those locations and then, yep, up top there as well.
So I think in like, in front of lot one, you can kind of, the aisle width is very wide and those larger vehicles could, you know, back out and make a three-point turn. But up at lot three, those ones, the hour, the, you know, the, the aisle is a lot narrower and I think we just wanted to see to make sure that, you know, you really have the circulation that you're intending for
Sure.
whatever those larger vehicles might be. And then is there going to be, there's going to be continued and auto-destructed access through the rear of this, through the rear of this lot? I think that was a little unclear to us, too. I mean, it connects to an existing circulation road.
Correct.
But is, you know, that, that circulation road is, then leaves this lot. So, you know, if, if that's the intended way for a, you know, a fire truck or any other emergency services to negotiate through the site, we just got, you know, we have to make sure that that access somehow remains open and adequate. I, you know, I don't, it kind of manures through the back and I don't know exactly where it goes.
Yeah, that's definitely a secondary access for sure. But we can provide more information to the board. In fact, I, I want to say that even that car parking lot on the left side there, that, nope, far left, that connects to that existing drive.
This one?
Yeah, correct, I think that might actually be gated off.
It might be gated off?
Yeah, so we would have to show that. But, yeah, we'll... Yeah, so we would have to show that. But yeah, we'll provide some clarification to that.
Because you had, you have, you have the fire apparatus shown on one of these plans, right?
Yes.
Uh, doesn't, I don't know. I don't know what sheet it is. I think it's towards the end.
Yeah, I'm in a different, I don't, I don't see it anywhere.
Troy, while she, while she's looking for that, I have one other question.
Sure.
With regards to the, just this C site, is there any type of security gating? Like, what's going to stop people from just kind of wandering onto the site or, you know, meandering around while, you know, hey, I heard this actor or actress is going to be there and they get flooded in there by some people?
Right.
General public?
Yeah, I believe there's going to be security gating and fencing, which is a good point because I don't know that we show that on our site plan at this point. But I'm quite sure there's security.
Okay.
For that reason.
Yeah, this doesn't have, that doesn't have the.
All right. Well, with regard for just sticking to building C and with regards to the traffic stuff, I think the traffic stuff is relatively minor. They did assign some trucks to, I mean, here they, I think conservatively estimated the traffic for the use, you know, for like peak hour traffic. I mean, there certainly might be the instance where they're bringing in more people for a particular thing, but I think, you know, that's going to have to be covered in a different way. And then the, you know, the other comments related to traffic are, are minor. I don't, I don't perceive that as being any issue in clearing that up. I think, you know, just this, the internal circulation and, you know, the fire apparatus circulation and, and that strategy is, is I think what's still needs to be vetted out.
Are you done?
Yep.
Well, basically, we had similar comments on A, B, and C. I do, I do agree with Troy that a lot of our comments are, you know, minor things that just have to be detailed a little bit further. The one question that I had is, can each of these projects be construed or can each of the sites be constructed independently of each other? I'm specifically thinking about the grading.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't know if that was, because, you know, in each of the comment letter, comment memos here, Christian talked about similar to the last application, that there appears to be, you know, a substantial amount of excavated material.
Right.
And we'd like to, like, know that. And the same, the same like question is, you know, I, you know, I know that probably you don't know where it's going to go yet, but we want to, a, a similar note on the plan in regards to if it does go into town of East Fishkill, similar to what we discussed before.
Right.
But I mean, then I got thinking about it and, you know, so if one, you know, one site like goes, goes, you know, before the other, can, you know, the grading be, you know, like blended in?
Yeah, to answer your question, all three sites can be constructed independent of the other as far as earthwork goes or really as far as any of the site improvements go. Site C, I think it will have a net cut because it basically slopes from the right side of the, of the plan from, I guess that's South, South Drive down to the left towards that existing building. So basically have to flatten it out a little bit. So we'll be cutting into, into the site a bit where it's less of a, a cut to a fill. So I think it's going to be mostly a cut. Then it has to be transported somewhere on site to, to date, I guess. Apparently that's why site B has a big mound of dirt on it is because that's where material has been, been stored. But yeah, so we'll have to provide those cut and fills for you and a, you know, a note or something as far as where it's going to go. Site A is more of a cut to a fill. So I think that's going to be more of a balanced site. And site B currently, like I said, has a huge mound of dirt on it. That's going to have to be removed and put somewhere else. So all three sites don't rely on the, each other for earthwork especially.
Okay. You know, other than that, it's, there's, we didn't have anything, you know, major. It was just, there was a lot of little details. And, you know, we'll work through them as, as the updates come in.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything else really.
If the only other, I mean, if we want to talk about them all, the only other place to have a significant comment would be at, at building A, the, the bigger warehouse. I don't know if you can pull a plan up, Michelle?
While she's doing that, Sue, this one, and again, I'm getting confused with free to lay maybe two, but this one doesn't have any health department approvals, does it?
No, I don't believe so.
Because any, the rearranging of water and sewer is basically, you know, existing onsite.
It's all internal connections. So I, I know your office had one comment for, you know, willing to serve letter, which we're, we're getting from, I think, Global.
Yeah, from Global Founders, right.
Right, but it's all internal connections and no extensions. So I don't believe we have a health department.
Yeah, health department. So, so one of the other things, too, was, you know, cross easements for, you know, utilities, water, sewer.
Right.
Like electric. I don't know that they're, I mean, maybe, you know, they're blanket easements, but that's something that you have, that, you know, your attorney will work out with the planning board attorney, but.
Yeah, I would imagine that there are blanket easements currently set up for this, but we'll provide some clarification on that. And if there's any proposed, you know, cross easements, things like that, that we would have to, you know, obviously prepare that and provide that to the board to approve. But there's a, a million utilities crisscrossing everywhere. I'm sure there's existing blanket easements in place.
So on this one, Troy, my question, so I have better understanding of this. I know one of our previous comments was that the parking was sort of out of whack with the traffic generation. And I think that the response to that was that there's a lot of this parking that's not going to be needed for this facility, but maybe utilized for other development on the I park site, not, not this particular development.
Correct.
And if I look at this map correctly, all the parking that's on the left-hand side of the screen, that's existing, that's not going to be touched.
Correct.
Right? You're going to get to that one island that's in the parking lot and, and your impact really goes to that island, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's right.
So I, I understand that. And I just want to, I guess I just want to make sure that that still functions the way it's intended to function or like, is that parking going to service the building that's?
This parking already, I can tell you, I know for a fact services this building because I know I, I approved.
Okay.
These parking spaces for the uses that are in this building here. So this area here is largely serving this building that's up in here, existing.
Okay. So I guess we just sort of, I mean, they got to be, make sure that there's some, however that's functioning, existing, that it gets maintained that way. But logistically, when this is constructed, so in the, on the, on the upper part of the screen, there's a, a retaining wall that, I'm not going to remember, that, that road actually has some kind of name. I can't remember the name. It's got the, some funky name, but it, it is actually, you know, a circulation road that's going to go into that back parking lot and services that building, right?
Correct.
There, that retaining wall, I don't, when I looked at it, I mean, I think it was eight to 10 feet high in some areas.
Yeah, I think eight foot was the maximum in the middle.
And I know it said preliminary detail, but the detail on the plan showed for it to be a cantilever type wall.
Yeah.
And I think the limit of work is really going to get pretty close to the building. And, and whether you're going to support that road during the construction of that wall, and I, I think there's some issues that need to be just from a, like, even if it's a temporary circulation issue during construction, that need to be clarified because that, that road.
You're talking about this road here?
Yes, that road there, that connection, it does have a name, but the, that connection, like during construction, might be, need to be eliminated to construct that wall. And the wall is basically being constructed so that a level area for the, the loading zones can be created. At least that's the way I understand it. So I think that if, if, some more clarity on that. And then along, along, this is, what drive is this?
West Drive.
West Drive. There are, there are three openings in the, in the curb cuts and there's a middle one that's not showing any movements in a wide cut. Is there?
Yeah, I think that's just a third access point for a more direct exit for vehicles at the, the loading docks in the middle of the building.
Okay. All right. And I think the, the comments we had on the, the third site were, were minor in nature.
Other questions or comments?
So I believe that we, we declared our intent to be lead agency back in September and they, they circulated. So I think at this point we could, we could declare a lead agency.
So entertain a motion to declare lead agency?
And actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you again. They, we did it with each one separately.
Ah, yes.
So we have to do three.
Okay. So, so we'll start with, we'll entertain a motion to declare lead agency for I park building A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And a motion to declare lead agency for I park building B.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And declare lead agency, motion to declare lead agency for I park building C.
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those all carry. And so Troy, do I understand you, you were asking if we could do, schedule a public hearing?
For C only.
Just for C?
Yeah, C is, right now, apparently the tenant is getting anxious and has talked about looking at other sites. So I got the word from my boss's, the applicant today to kind of try to push that it'd be real important if we could schedule the public hearing and, and it would help kind of keep the deal, I guess.
Is there any, anything that would prevent us from doing that that we're aware of?
I think the only thing we should then make an effort to try to meet with the fire advisory board or have some kind of field meeting.
Yeah.
That should get set up and, and occur prior to the public. I mean, you could set the date and just have that occur before then so that those questions can be answered.
Is that something you can do, Troy?
Yeah, I don't know how quickly or easily it is to meet with the fire advisory board or if they can schedule special meetings or you meet with one or two folks or, yeah, so I don't know how quickly that comes together, to be honest.
Well, I think tomorrow we'll call them and see when they can be available.
Okay. Great. So I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for I park building C to take place on January 18th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Troy?
Thank you very much.
See you next month. Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas to you. And, and so is there any other business to be brought before the planning board?
We have one more.
Uh, excuse me. I should have mentioned, West Hook Realty is going to, is withdrawn for this meeting and we'll consider that at, at a future meeting.
Coming in for pre-apps or something?
Sorry about that.
They should.
So with that.
Are they here?
I'm having difficulty hearing.
Oh, it's here.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, so there's a, there's a little confusion because they had an outstanding permit issue on their property, but I guess it's been handled at this point. So.
We held it today.
Okay.
I'll make it quick. I'll make it quick.
I'm sorry, Brian. Fine. If it happens. My apologies.
West Hook Realty Sand and Gravel. What they want to do is a lot line realignment between the two pieces that they own. So I, what I try to do is throw a little bit of color on the plan here to give you an idea of what we're looking at. So right now it exists, the pink piece is one parcel and the green and the blue are one parcel. And what they would like to do is take the blue from the green parcel and throw it into the pink parcel. So basically this green parcel would be a new parcel and then this pink parcel would be the entirety of, of.
The sand and gravel operation. So again, this piece right here, green, green and blue are one piece. And then this piece is a separate piece right here. So basically taking this blue area here and giving it to, to the mining operation.
So Brian, I think once when I had met with you and it was in a pre-app meeting, there had been, there were structures right on that lot line, the blue lot line. And then I, what happened with that? Have they since been removed or what?
I think we met in, what, May?
Yeah.
And that was just recently resolved through six months of survey work and going out and looking at new points and deeds. So the survey that we submitted, the, the existing condition one shows that encroachment adjusted and not being an encroachment anymore.
Okay, so it wasn't actually an encroachment or they, they, once, once they surveyed everything and they figured out the buildings were actually on the right parcel?
Yeah, they figured out. They coordinated with different surveyors. I think Bob Oikle or Rob Oikle did the survey for that piece that we were looking at and they got their information together and if there was a rotation error, and that's how they clarified it.
Okay. And then what is the purpose of the lot line realignment?
Um, they just wanted to take this, this open area here, which they vegetated the chair all out to the larger piece. There's no intention to do anything right now. They just wanted to have this be standalone and just make this smaller and flip this property over.
And where's the sand and gravel operation? Which parcel?
Uh, you come in here. The sand and gravel operation is in here right now. And it also goes across the proper line to the other piece that they own. So it's actually, you put that number, the mine goes all the way over into, uh, the official.
Is the purpose of this to expand the operation or is?
Nope, they just wanted, there, there was mining that was performed here and they just wanted to add that to the mine itself. There's no, this, this area here is made as, it's vegetated. There's no disturbance. There's no mining activity associated with this piece here.
And it's all the same zoning?
Same R1.
Why did, why, why did it look like there was a problem?
So, well, we've, we received a complaint in the planning office about truck traffic increasing along Cary Road recently. So we're, I guess, trying to figure out what's happening there now that may be different. That's increasing that truck traffic because it's my understanding that the mining operation has, is sort of coming to a close at this point. There's not really much left to mine out of there. Let me just see if I can pull up, I'm going to pull up the aerial hopefully. So do you know if there's been any change in the operation?
I've never been advised of any change in operation, but I can ask the applicant.
So this parcel is split down the middle part of it's in Fish, the town of Fishkill and part of it's in East Fishkill, but the, all the roads and access are in East Fishkill. So I actually have a call into the Fishkill office to, to understand what's, what they've approved because we get all their traffic essentially. And I'm going to try to show that to you.
And are you currently seeking some approval from the town of Fishkill? No, just this?
Just all we have in front of, involving this piece is, is the lot line realignment with this board.
And the zoning that carries over into Fishkill's same zoning as what is?
Residential on the other side.
So you said the green is, is untouched on the drawing. The parcel just to the bottom of the drawing of that, what's, what's there? Are there residential houses there?
Yeah, so this is.
Yeah, there's residential here.
This is, this is the parcel here.
Yep.
That is being, it's being, the proposal is to split it here, add this section to here. This, everything that's in yellow is in East Fishkill. This is all Fishkill here. Okay? This is the access to the site right here.
So are they already mining the lot that they want to roll into the bigger lot?
Yeah, so you can, Michelle's got her pointer on it right there.
This is the lot right here that they want to. This is the lot right here that they want to connect to this lot. It's been mined.
What are they mining? Is it just stone or aggregate?
Aggregate, stone.
Is the intent to encroach more on the line with mining?
No.
Like, that, that would be my concern if I lived on that road.
Sure.
Or that, is that residential if they're going to do a lot line revision and then start mining that?
Yeah, it's, it's residential there, they have mined it, and you can see that slight slope there has actually been reclaimed by mother nature. So they've, they've, you can tell they're actually moving kind of like in a north, northwestern direction.
So this little entrance here, I guess the concern is that the truck traffic that, or the complaint we received was by somebody all the way over on Cary Road, which is pretty, let me see if I can show it to you.
Yeah, I think Cary is to the northwest, right?
Yeah, it's here, okay, as you cross here over 84. So they would be, the trucks are traveling on these local back roads. And my understanding, according to, to the person I spoke with, it, it's like 14 to 16 trucks an hour between 11 and 2 PM. So at least, at least.
And we're talking like tractor trailers, like huge 18-wheel?
And that's a residential road? What's the speed limit on that?
Yeah, so, and I guess, the person has lived there for a while and has noticed a significant increase in the truck traffic.
I wonder if there's weight limits on those roads that these, if they're fully aggregate, I'm sure there's some issues.
Because that's the one that's built, like, if you go down this road down all the way to Route 9, right?
Cary Road, Cary Road gets you to 52.
Yes, yeah.
Cary Road gets you to 52 because.
Almost, you get, you get down by the old Wikipedia.
Yeah, sure, yeah. Yeah, Fishkill, right, 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 right. But it seems like that's a, that's a long out of the way, out of the way to go to get to anything.
That's why we'd like to kind of have a better understanding of what, what's happening on the site right now.
Mm-hmm. But sometimes I do take that road and cut over, you know, you go all the way up and over 84 and then cut down all the way to Route 9, like where the old Duchess Mall is down there. That road carries over. Yeah.
If you were heading down to like, you know, some of the plants on Southern Route 9, that's where you would go.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is there connectivity? Is this mining operation in connection with theirs?
They might be supplying material to some of those plants.
Yeah.
That makes perfect sense, actually.
Something.
We can, we can look into it, I'll provide you some information.
You had mentioned something, I just want to make sure I understood what you said. So the blue area, you said they found more aggregate there that they could mine, so is the intent going to be to increase the mining effort in that blue area?
No, no, they've already mined that.
So that's, that's all done? There's no more mining in there?
Yeah, you can tell they're kind of going like.
Then I'm still not clear on what the practical effect is of, of just, of merging that with the area that's being mined.
They wanted, they wanted the, the mining site to be all-inclusive onto one piece.
Did you say it was R1? So that's why. What, what did you say? It's R1? R1, yeah, it's all, it's all R1. This is, they want to separate the lot. It's an, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, and that's why we have to understand what's happening to make sure that the, the use hasn't changed on the site.
Yeah, but they wouldn't be able, they wouldn't be able to like to build on it.
Oh, the other lot?
They're almost done mining.
The other lot get built on it.
The other lot in front.
Separates the mining from the development of the lot.
Why wouldn't they be able to build on the front lot if they're done mining?
Front lot they could, yeah.
Right.
But they're making, they're making, they're making the front lot smaller by giving the piece.
Right.
The piece where they already mined.
Right, because they mined it, so now it's basically a clean lot.
Then they could do something here if they want.
So I think we need to declare our intent to be lead agency tonight and circ, and circulate.
Yep, and we'll get you more information on the questions that you asked about truck traffic and where the mine sits right now and their operations.
And I guess to the connectivity to what other operation, because if that is going to definitely ramp up activity down to some of these other, that other plant down on lower, you know, heading south on 9, I would just like to understand that based on the findings from the homeowner's call of that truck traffic activity picking up, you know, significantly. Because that's a lot of truck traffic.
And it's not an easy road to traverse.
No.
It's got its constraints.
And especially in the winter and stuff like that, that's got to be very dangerous for those trucks.
Really?
Well, it might only be seasonal too, right? I mean, if it's for concrete and asphalt, it probably got dry up for the winter.
And can we kind of find out a little bit more too about the permitting process? I'm not even sure who, where do the permits come from? Is it a state permit?
For, for trucking?
For mining?
The mining's a DEC.
I think the mining is largely, operation is largely done. That's why I'm questioning why there's additional truck traffic because it was a mine.
Okay.
A mine use, so what use is happening there now that's precipitating additional truck traffic? That's the question.
So you're saying that the mining operation has subsided?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so I guess we'd like to understand that too.
And you said there's 14 trucks an hour?
14 to 16 trucks an hour, he said, he was saying. And he, I guess, I guess this person has been home recently and said he's been noticing this, you know, over the last, I don't know why he's home, but he hadn't been, he'd been out of the house and now he's home and noticing it quite a bit, yeah.
I mean, that seems excessive for a mine that's on its way out, right? You're not mining anymore.
Either that or maybe, I mean, I don't know, is there activity heading over to like other sites, like maybe over towards like the Amazon site?
Well, the question is, I mean, the, I'm, I'm, one of the reasons I have the call into Fishkill is to make sure that they haven't approved a use on their site.
Okay.
That we don't know about.
Yes.
And then also just to understand really what's happening over there.
Okay.
And, and as far as anything going on in Fishkill, just dealing with the applicant, we haven't, we haven't heard anything that he's been involved with over in there on the Fishkill side, so, and.
We haven't gotten any circulations from Fishkill.
Right.
We, we have not gotten anything from Fishkill, no.
It honestly took us a year to get the survey straight, so.
We might not have.
Where are the engineers for, like, Fishkill also, and there isn't any application before the board?
Thank you, Peter.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
This is a good preview, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
We need a motion for the lead agency.
Yeah, we need to declare our intent to be lead agency.
Okay, so I'll accept a motion to declare intent to be lead agency.
So moved, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Have a merry Christmas, guys.
Yes, I want to wish everybody a happy holiday and a happy and healthy new year. If there's nothing else to be brought before the board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.